Since like three o'clock, I had a lot.
Couldn't finish anymore.
No. Could not. Then you're like, what? There's always things.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Convened with all members present, Councilwoman Range is absent excused. For those who are to able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, we begin with minutes for approval. May I have a motion for the executive minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five? Second? So these were already discussed in executive? All in favor?
Aye.
And may I have a motion for the regular minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections for the regular minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
These were also discussed in executive? So all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, may I have a motion for the regular minutes of February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome all. I'm honored to serve as the acting mayor and chair the public meeting in place of Mayor Connolly, who's enjoying some time away in a hopefully cooler place. We do have one agenda discussion tonight that the mayor wishes to participate in even while he's on vacation, so he will be joining the meeting briefly by Zoom for a presentation on our Affordable Housing Plan to be made by our Borough Professional Planner. So it's been a scorchingly hot week, as we know. The borough has opened cooling centers, closed athletic fields for safety, and took the step of notifying residents of peak electricity demand days, including tips for easing demand on the grid and lowering our $3 million peak charges from JCPN-L, which is for energy demand on the hottest days of the year. Kudos to our Madison Electric Utility crews who have remained on call at the Water and Light Building to quickly dispatch for localized outages and have significantly reduced downtime for our residents as a result of their vigilance. I think we'll hear more about that later during the utility report. On June tenth, Mayor Connolly presented Jeanette Boleo-Ratey with a proclamation on the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday. He reported that she walked right into the party, celebrated with friends and with the mayor, and cut the cake herself. So congratulations and best wishes for continued health and happiness to Mrs. Ratey. I also want to congratulate the Madison students who are moving up to new grades and onto new schools, who celebrated their last day of school on Friday, June thirteenth. Special congratulations to our Madison High School class of two thousand twenty-five. You've made Madison proud, and we are excited to see what you accomplish as you take the next step and make your way into the wide world. So as I say this, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that the wide world seems fraught right now as we face uncertainty abroad and at home. On June fourteenth, we learned of the assassination of one elected official and the attempted assassination of another in Minnesota just eleven days ago. This was by an attacker posing as a police officer. We are now in an atmosphere of fear of political violence combined with a dangerous trend of impersonating law enforcement. Meanwhile, all around the country and here in New Jersey, we have witnessed fear and mistrust as federal Homeland Security agents, who conceal their identities as they conduct immigration enforcement actions, have made it unclear to detainees whose custody they're in or under what authority. So with federal government agents concealing their identity and their missions with masks and plainclothes and a fear of assailants impersonating law enforcement, this atmosphere of generalized mistrust is hanging heavy on us. So I reached out to Chief Mishah for some context and guidance from the Madison Police Department. The MPD under Chief Mishah's leadership has worked hard to build trust within the community and embodied the department's values of trust, honor, and transparency. Chief Mishah advised that there is no purpose for the Madison Police Department to wear masks. Officers are not issued masks and don't wear them. He noted that our Madison Police are well-established in the public and have worked to be ingrained in the fabric of our community. And he further said if a Madison Police Officer comes to your residence or your business for any reason, they would be in full uniform or at a minimum, provided identification in any extraordinary circumstance. I want to thank the chief and the members of the Madison Police Department for their continued commitment to building trust within our community. Okay, we now move on to reports from committees. I'll begin with the Finance and Borough Clerk Report. This is actually a rerun from the last meeting, but this is important enough that the CFO suggested I remind residents about our upcoming tax bill. The tax bills are expected to be mailed in mid-July with the third quarter taxes due August first. Due to the normal tax billing schedule, which is halfway through the year, the third and fourth quarter amounts are always a bit higher than the first and second quarters of the following year. And there will be a bigger increase this year due to the school referendum that was adopted. A letter was sent out to all taxpayers and at the end of April explaining this increase, and copies are available in the tax office. Please note that if you have a mortgage lender paying your taxes, they might assume that future quarters will all be equivalent to the larger third and fourth quarters this year, which may result in your lender miscalculating your monthly escrow amount and overcharging you. We therefore recommend that you monitor your escrow account through the beginning of next year for any changes. You're welcome to please contact the Tax Collector's Office if you have any questions. We now move on to Public Safety. Councilwoman Landrigan.
Thank you. From the Madison Police Department. The Madison Police Department has begun its annual Bike Helmet Awards Program, which aims at promoting bike-riding safety. Further, Madison Police Officers are instructed to concentrate on electric bike safety. The Madison Police Department will be stopping riders on e-bikes who have passengers on the back, who are not wearing helmets, and who are driving carelessly on sidewalks. We aim to educate riders on safety for themselves and others. For further questions, call the Madison Community Policing at nine-seven-three-five-nine-three-three-zero-three-four. Last week on June tenth, the Madison Police Department swore in their newest officer, Michael Langrenavis. The probationary patrolman will begin his police academy training beginning in July until December twelfth. We wish him the best of luck in his training and welcome him to the Madison Police family. The Madison Police Department Command Staff, Chief Captain and Lieutenant, attended the J.A. Montgomery Risk Management Training on June sixteenth. This training provides updates on case laws and is crucial for preventing and mitigating potential liabilities, ensuring safety and well-being of its personnel. The Madison Police held its annual Dare Pool Party at the Madison Community Pool on June thirteenth. It was well-attended by fifth graders, students, and teachers. DJ Chuck Russo played great music and Madison Police Officers manned the grill flipping hamburgers. We always enjoy getting to spend time with our Madison youth and hope they will remember what they learned during their drug abuse resistance education training. From the Madison Fire Department. Three members of the Career Division completed advanced confined space rescue training at the Morris County Public Safety Academy. This training focused on rescuing a trapped person in a confined space such as a manhole, electrical vault, or any type of vessel. The fire department is notified almost daily of confined space entry by workers working in confined spaces in Madison, Chatham, and Berkeley Heights. Elise, a ten-month-old German Shepherd and future seeing eye dog, spent the past week hanging out at the fire department day by day and heading home with the fire chief at night. She had a blast making new friends, soaking up all the action, and getting used to the sights and sounds of a busy fire department. Elise even tagged along on meetings and visits the Hartley Dodge Memorial, clearly a pup on a mission. We are going to miss her wagging her tail in curious ways, but we are cheering her on as she heads off to the next big step in her guide on being a training dog. On July twelfth, Engine One was dispatched to a working structure fire in Florham Park. Upon arrival, Madison firefighters assisted Florham Park units with fire suppression, conducted a primary search, and performed ventilation operations. Their coordinated efforts helped bring the fire under control quickly and prevented further extension within the structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Councilwoman Honahan.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. From the Public Works and Engineering Department, the Parks Department continues to prepare fields for the spring sports activities and cuts grass at all borough fields and parks. Residents are asked to check if their sump pumps are being discharged into the borough sewer system. They should not be discharged into the sewer system because it causes the borough to be charged for rainwater, groundwater, to be processed as sewage. The Department of Public Works patched potholes. The Sewer Department is cleaning storm drains. The DPW assisted Water Utility with a water main break on Madison Avenue and repaired the road. Mechanics checked and repaired bicycles at the Central Avenue School Bike Rodeo. From the Madison Environmental Commission, there will be a house and garden tour coming on Saturday, July twelfth, from one to four. Architect Chris Kellogg and artist Helen Carr opened their home and will also share their new native plant garden. It is $20 per person if you'd like to join the tour, and it's a fundraiser for Habitat Restoration in Madison. On July twentieth, at seven PM, Nature of Reading and the MEC will be hosting a community discussion of Night Magic by LeAnn Henyon. This is a book inviting us to leave our illuminated homes, to step outside, and to embrace nature of the dark. Steve Mariconda from Dark Sky International will also discuss impacts of lighting on health. This will be held at the Madison Community Arts Center. Please sign up at the Nature of Reading website. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, sorry, Public Utilities, Councilwoman Harlan Foudas.
Okay, thank you, Acting Mayor Ehrlich, and welcome, members of the community. It was an interesting week with the heat. The borough managed it very well. From the Water Department, we were able to schedule and operate a ninety percent shutdown at the North Street Main, which facilitated repairs at Seawell for testing and operations. We dug and repaired six curb boxes, shut-off valves that enabled meter changes and shut-offs for demo. With the increased heat, the department's pumping more than 2.6 million gallons of water per day, but the department is acknowledging that that's not as much as it could be. The residents are thanked for their efforts to voluntarily reduce water usage. The department replaced a broken iron water service at 123 Park Avenue. New three-quarter inch copper was installed. They responded to an eight-inch water main break at Madison Avenue at three PM. Sunday, June fifteenth, Father's Day, they excavated and removed concrete-based roadway to gain access to the main, where further obstructions existed as the new PSENG main installed about nine years ago is almost directly above there and seven feet deep, so they needed to do some work there. And the Water Department continues to change curb boxes, valve repairs, hydrant replacements, and well upgrades. From the Electric Utility, the first note that we would like to mention to the community is there was an array of power outages this week, Monday and Tuesday, affected about 230 residents. The majority of the power outages were anywhere from a half an hour to two hours. So our Electric Utility staff was on-call, very responsive, and knew exactly what to do to keep everybody powered up and return to power as quickly as possible. So of course, as usual, kudos to the whole department. Some of the other work that they performed, some standby, Forty-seven Wayne Boulevard, I report the house didn't have power. The connections in the house were replaced. What else? There was a standby, was called for emergency markouts for the water main break. The Electric Utility responded. The Electric Department responded to numerous outages on Monday. Again, I already said that. All repairs have been made to our two bucket trucks, which are now both back in service, and we are able to return our bucket truck rental to Butler. And I would like to give a little report, please, Acting Mayor Ehrlich, on the solar carport at the MRC. The solar carport project at the MRC is nearing completion. Structural designs have been updated to support the solar panel sizes, which required extensions of the purlins, which are the beams that hold the panels. This has now been completed. Solar panel installation is complete on Array One, which is near the auxiliary parking lot on the north side, while Array Three and Four by the fieldhouse are about ninety percent complete. Array Two, located in the center lot, is approximately eighty percent complete. We anticipate panel installation to be complete by the beginning of next week. Gutter installation began today across all the arrays, with the inverter installation and array electrical connections coming after the panels have been mounted. The Madison Electric Utility has completed wiring from the rear transformer of the MRC to the front bolt located in front of the fieldhouse. The Madison Electric Utility will finish the job by digging a trench and hard-wiring this fieldhouse disconnect switch to the utility, hopefully by next week. Newly signed and sealed structural drawings and calculations are expected to be provided to the borough this week to prepare for the final walkthrough and inspection. The projected completion timeline includes final panel installation by early next week, electrical and gutter work by mid to late next week, and final site cleanup and walkthroughs during the week of July seventh. The system is targeted to be operational by July fourteenth, and in conjunction, the parking lot will be opened again for parking at the MRC fields. So the project's really moving ahead now, and hopefully it will be a great contribution to the borough's power generation when it's completed. That's all.
Thank you. That's exciting news. And for Community Affairs, back to Councilwoman Honahan.
Thank you. The Downtown Development Commission will help hold its next meeting on July seventeenth at seven fifteen in Hartley Dodge Memorial. As a reminder, the Madison Farm and Artisan Market is being held every Saturday. The Bottle Hill Day fiftieth anniversary will be on October fourth. The Chamber of Commerce is selling Madison Loyalty Reward Cards for purchase. Those are $10 each and can be purchased at the Madison Pharmacy, the METC, and it is sponsored by the Morris Animal Inn. The Madison Community Arts Center continues to have a full schedule. Every second Wednesday, there's an open mic night, and Friday, July eighteenth, from six to eight, is a free outdoor summer concert. Thank you.
Thank you. And Health, Councilwoman Forte.
Thank you. During this heat wave this week, the Health Department would like to remind residents that during the extreme heat, they should stay inside in air-conditioned spaces as much as possible, particularly those who are in vulnerable populations. A full list of local cooling centers are available on the Westfield Regional Health Department Facebook and Instagram page. Again, we partner with Westfield, that's why we're directing you to Westfield. Residents should stay hydrated, wear loose-fitting clothing, lightweight clothing, and schedule outdoor activities outside of peaks on hours if possible. The Health Department recommends checking on vulnerable individuals and reminds residents never to leave children or pets inside parked cars. The Morris County Mosquito Commission has already identified some mosquito pools in the county that are positive for West Nile virus. Residents should eliminate any standing water on their properties. Ensure gutters are clean and be sure to wear an EPA-registered insect repellent when spending time outdoors, especially during dusk. I would also like to endorse the Mosquito Bucket of Doom, which we learned about in one of the previous council meetings, thanks to one of our residents. I looked that up when I went home, and it's very interesting, and it does work. It's a proven method. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to Communications and Petitions.
None received, Ms. Ehrlich.
Okay, so next is our first of two invitations for public comment. The second public comment period will follow our ordinances for hearing, but at this time, you're limited to commenting on our discussion agenda and our resolutions. So these are the items you may comment on. Our agenda discussion will be a presentation on third and fourth round housing element and fair share plan, which demonstrates compliance with the state process for planning our municipal share of New Jersey's affordable housing needs. We'll have a presentation on this topic following this comment period. And additionally, these are the resolutions you may comment on. Resolution one ninety-one, approving raffles. A raffle license application submitted by the Auxiliary of Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corp. Resolution one ninety-two is to renew liquor licenses in the borough of Madison for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six license term. Resolution one ninety-three is to create and implement a long-range plan to address drainage issues. This is for stormwater management. Resolution one ninety-four requests the Director of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget for this year. So this is a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust Fund. This resolution is to receive a $488,000 grant that was previously awarded for repairs at the Heller Center. Our one ninety-five is also for the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget for this year. This is for the recycling tonnage grant. This is to accept a grant for $13,688 that we receive annually from the state. I understand we use this to purchase new trash and recycling bins downtown and other improvements related to waste management. Resolution one ninety-six is another insertion of item of revenue. So this is a grant awarded by Sustainable Jersey in the amount of $10,000 for new electric landscaping equipment for our Public Works Department. Resolution one ninety-seven is a resolution of the Borough of Madison supporting the Madison Housing Authority application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program. So this indicates the borough's support for our housing authorities' application for state aid for the construction of four affordable rental units at thirty-four Belmont Ave. Resolution one ninety-eight, resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing submission of a grant application and executing a grant contract with the New Jersey DOT for the Spring Garden Drive, Ashland Road, and Tooth Place roadway improvement project. Resolution one ninety-nine is a resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing the use of the Community Pool public parking lot by the Madison Steam Academy for a bus pickup and drop-off for their day camp program this summer. Resolution two hundred is a resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing execution of a settlement and release agreement with CSC TRK LLC, which is a subsidiary of Altice. This is regarding fees for the use of our borough-owned utility poles for telecom service wiring. Resolution two oh one is a resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing the purchase of computer equipment and peripherals through the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. This is in the amount of $44,000 for the purchase of updated computer software licenses. This is in the amount of $44,000 for the purchase of updated computer software licenses. So, let me go back to my notes here. Those are the items you may comment on. Those resolutions will also be part of the consent agenda. So anyone wishing to comment on any of those items, please step forward, state your name and address. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a minute of grace. I'll make a note that during this period, we'll capture all the comments and questions, and at the end of the comment period regarding the agenda discussion, the planners will be, our planner will be giving a presentation and answer those questions and address any comments and questions that were raised during this comment period. So now, anyone wishing to comment, please step forward.
Good evening. Sam DiMarzo, I'm here to discuss an empty property of mine.
Mr. DiMarzo, could you give your address, please?
Sure. 28 Hoyt Street, and I am discussing joining property on Westerly Avenue, 16 Westerly. This afternoon, my phone started blowing up with a lot of calls and text messages about information that was published in the public domain regarding affordable housing and this location, which is mine. And what was communicated to me was that there was an overlay zoning that was going to be occurring. And first, I'd like to thank Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett for taking the time to speak with me and to go over the facts of the situation. First, let me state very clearly, I am opposed to this, if that ever comes to the table. I was assured that that is not the case, that there was some misinformation put into the public domain through a variety of sources, but I do want to make it known that I am opposed to any zoning changes on Westerly Avenue and adjoining neighborhoods. The affordable housing locations that are going to be discussed tonight, they do have an immense effect on not just the property owners, but specifically the property owners, but also the entire neighborhood and community. And this needs to be considered in any actions, because these actions are all going to have an effect on everyone, whether it's on a personal level or a financial level. Everything that's discussed tonight in regards to this will have effects on the community, and that's both property owners and residents combined. I would also like to ask that the government body, moving forward, make an effort to communicate with specific neighborhoods that are going to undergo changes. I understand there are notification requirements, there are minimums that are required, and I suggest the borough go beyond those in these affected neighborhoods. Minimums should be exceeded for changes that are permanent and lasting for the community. Lastly, I will listen to the presentation, and if need be, I will comment further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarzo. So our planner will address those comments and questions as part of the presentation, and if we need to circle back and raise questions that are unresolved, we'll do so. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to step forward?
Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I wanted to briefly comment on Resolution 196, 2025, which is the Sustainable Jersey Grant, and I wanted to call out the hard work of Peter Freed, Kathy Caca Valley, Bridget Daly, and Bob Duffy and his team at the DPW. This is, they did a calculation on what kind of, how best to fund electric landscaping equipment, including the amount of lawn leaf blowers that would be required to comply with a summer moratorium, should that get passed. But it will help make Madison healthier, help make summer quieter, and it puts our DPW in an excellent leadership position. It's my understanding that Sustainable Jersey is really advocating for electric landscaping equipment, and five towns applied for grants, and three were awarded their grants, and a $10,000 grant is, especially since we got a $20,000 last year, is a testament to the team here.
Thank you, Claire. I appreciate the recognition for that team. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close this part of the meeting. We're now going to move on to our agenda discussion. I believe the mayor has joined us by Zoom. Is that correct? Look at that. There he is.
I am here, and I want to-
He is going to chair this portion of the meeting as we move on to the affordable housing discussion. So mayor, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for chairing the meeting. As I am coming in remotely, it makes it much easier to have someone in the room to run the meeting, and it's, I know it's in great hands, and it also is a, as you mentioned at the beginning, I'm on vacation, so it gives me a little more family time. So what we are tasked with tonight is endorsing the revised third round and fourth round housing element and fair share plan as adopted by the planning board Monday night. And also, as Council President Ehrlich mentioned, I am coming on board now because of the importance of this work and the steps we're following. So as you will see, this plan reflects extensive work by a professional team, the planning board, and the Borough Council, and the borough staff, and it also meets our legal obligations as it relates to delivering quality, affordable housing. Our planner, Susan Vavadi, will present the plans as the same presentation that was given to the planning board Monday evening, and also, as mentioned by Council President Ehrlich, she'll cover any questions that just came up. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to our planner for presentation, and we will follow up with Borough Council discussion and the approval of the two resolutions.
Thank you, mayor. So just to reiterate, the planning board did adopt the amended third round housing plan, element and fair share plan, as well as the new fourth round housing element and fair share plan on Monday night. Those are elements of the master plan, so it is under the planning board's jurisdiction to adopt those items, and then you are asked to endorse them. So I'm going to start out with the third round plan. Just as way introduction, I'm the regular borough planner. Graham Pedo is the special affordable housing planner brought on for these two documents. He was not able to join tonight, so I get to do the whole thing. But Graham and I have been working very closely together on both of these documents. So just to start out with the third round, this is a bit unusual. Madison is a bit of an unusual case here in that many of you know that all the communities around us have been doing their fourth round plan, as have you, which is required by June 30th, but this is a bit of a different case in that Madison also had to go back and revise the third round plan. And some of the background of that is that the third round plan has been in place, it was adopted on May 26th of 2021, and then on August 16th of 2021, the court did enter an order of fairness and conditional judgment of compliance, which gave the borough 10 years of immunity from builder's remedy. So the third round plan was in place. And then in June of 2022, Drew University filed to vacate that court order and to facilitate portions of its campus to be considered in the vacant land adjustment and realistic development potential of the third round plan to basically allow for an inclusionary project with an affordable housing set aside. So because of that action and various other court actions, including a trial, there was an order by the court in February of this year that essentially concluded that 48.322 acres of the Drew campus are potentially developable, not environmentally constrained, and therefore must be considered in the third round vacant land adjustment. And then the court further identified the number of affordable units that must be considered, and it's 77 units, which is based on the density that is established by the court, eight units per acre, and then a 20% set aside. So the judge ordered the borough to revisit the third round plan, revise the VLA, the vacant land adjustment, and then account for those 77 required affordable units in any way the borough deems appropriate, which may include Drew's land but may not. We've bolded that for emphasis because it's important. The order did give the borough flexibility in identifying appropriate sites for those 77 units. It didn't mandate where they had to be, just that they had to be found, and they had to be complying with all the rules in place for the third round plan. And then the only other important element I wanted to point out on this slide is that the judge's order only affected the third round. So he did acknowledge that the fourth round was already underway, the planning for that. There were numbers imposed on the borough for the fourth round, which we'll hear about, but this was really specific to the third round. He also acknowledged that the borough had an unmet need requirement for affordable housing in the third round, which was previously satisfied. So this really was just 77 new units that needed to be found, and that's why we're here tonight and why the plan was revised. So on the next slide, you will see the ways that we get there, how we have sort of found those 77 units. And it's really a mix of already existing units that the borough is taking credit for, other units that are already underway, under construction, that again, we're getting credit for, and then a couple of projects that are underway or otherwise being proposed. So the first one is at 3 Gerald A. This is the former Quest Diagnostics building, which has been vacant for several years, and the borough has started a redevelopment process. An area in need of designation study has been completed and will be heard by the planning board next month. So that is a process that had sort of already started. The proposal there by the developer is a townhome community, a for-sale townhome community that would include 28 affordable townhomes. So that would get us 28 credits. And then at 1 Gerald A., this was also a redevelopment plan that was done last year, amended earlier this year. There are two components to this property. There is a multifamily inclusionary development, and then there's a second part, which is a supportive housing, a special needs housing component. Those are two separate applications that are currently before, are working their way through to the planning board. They've been submitted. So the multifamily piece, which is being part of the third round, would be seven affordable units, and then we get a one-for-one bonus credit in the third round. You were able to take a bonus credit for any rental units. So that nets us 14 units for that property. Pine Acres is the existing nursing home, which has been in place for quite a while in Madison. There are state statutes that require facilities like Pine Acres that have undergone certain amounts of improvements to set aside 10% of their beds for Medicaid patients. That's an existing requirement, and it's also in place for Sunrise. The borough did take credit for the Sunrise beds in the third round plan previously, but not for Pine Acres. So we're essentially taking credit now and getting those 10 beds or 10 units. And then at 28 Walnut Street, Community Place, this is a nearly complete, 100% affordable, borough-sponsored project. The Community Place portion has opened. The Walnut Street portion is very close. So what happened with this project is that as part of the development, this was already counted in the third round plan, but as part of the development process, the borough ended up actually getting three additional affordable units that were not expected and not previously credited. So we are taking those credits now, and that gets us three units plus the three bonuses, so six total credits. And then a similar situation at the Madison Mall Building, which is currently under construction on Main Street. As part of the developer negotiations in that project, the borough got a higher set aside for affordable housing, and so you netted two additional affordable units that we're now counting, plus the two bonus credits, a four total. The next couple are already existing affordable housing projects on Belmont Avenue. This is a longtime affordable housing development, but last year, the zoning board approved a subdivision of that property to allow for construction of an additional building, a small building at that site, which would result in an additional four affordable units. So again, four units, four bonus credits, total of eight. And then a similar situation at 30 Central, again, an existing affordable housing development. There was a zoning board approval last year to allow for, you know, lot line adjustments, and then another amendment this year, but basically to facilitate a redevelopment of that property, again, for affordable housing, but with an additional two units beyond what currently exists. So we'll be counting those and getting the two bonus credits as well. And then the last project is an existing group home on Britton Street. That is considered supportive housing, and it is counted by bedroom or bed, and so that is three units of existing supportive housing for which we are taking credit. So collectively, these projects, many of which already exist, but several of which are already, were already on the books, already under construction, that gets us to the 77 units. And we do feel that these are all, because so many of them already do exist or are in process, they're very realistic opportunities for affordable housing. So that's the third round plan. It's just an amendment to the existing plan, a little bit more straightforward. And now I'll get into the fourth round plan, which is a little bit more involved. This is what everyone around you has been working on as well, and just the point of this slide is to show you, these are the deadlines, the statutory timeline that every community has dealt with. You all got your prospective need obligation, the number from the state late last year, and basically had until the end of January to accept or not accept that number. There was a required deadline in February for filing of a, you know, a challenge to that number, and then if there was a challenge, there was a challenge period in March through April, the beginning of April. What we're here tonight about is the deadline for June 30th to adopt the actual plan. After June 30th, the fourth round will start, and there will be a period, a challenge period, where objectors to this plan could file a challenge to this plan. It's a fairly short challenge period through the end of August. If there are challenges filed, there will be a mediation period through the end of this year. Pretty compressed timeline, but really the intent is that by March 15th of next year, that is the deadline to adopt not only the plan but all the implementing measures. And so I'll talk a little bit about what all of those are. The next slide just shows how Madison met all these timelines. Basically, in January, you accepted the number of 206, which is again, from the state, and we'll talk about the next steps that arose from that. You filed the required declaratory judgment action, there were no challenges filed, and so then the borough proceeded to prepare the fourth round plan, which was completed and released to the public on June 13th. Monday night, the planning board did adopt that plan, and then we're here at the final step, which is the Borough Council endorsing the plan by resolution. So a couple of the key contents that I'm going to go through is that 206 number, how that number has been adjusted, and then that drives really the creation of the plan itself. What are the components of the housing element and fair share plan? And then there's a series of additional requirements that we'll touch on. So this is just the state's definition. I'm not going to necessarily read it, but it is, what is the prospective need for affordable housing, and this is how the state defines it. And again, all of this is by state statute, and the number was determined by the Department of Community Affairs, so that it was given to the borough, and then the borough needs to address that. So the vacant land adjustment is a really important part of the affordable housing plan for Madison. You have the number of 206, the 206 units, which is what the state determined is your prospective need, but then communities such as Madison that are very well-developed have the opportunity to adjust that number downward if they can prove that there is a limited amount of vacant land to actually accommodate that number, and that's called a vacant land adjustment. And it is an exercise that every community who does a VLA goes through. There are other affordable housing advocates who are probably doing the same exercise as well. They're looking at your vacant land, and so this is an exercise that we have also done as part of this effort, and I'll talk a little bit about the details of that. But the outcome of the vacant land adjustment is what's called the realistic development potential. It's the number that can reasonably be expected to develop from the vacant land that you actually have, and it's, as you'll see, a much lower number than 206. Now, the difference between the 206 and the realistic development potential, it doesn't go away. You still are meant to address that obligation, and so one of the requirements for this fourth round is that you have to show affirmatively that you're addressing 25% of that difference in the next 10-year period. I think there's an expectation that most communities will never reach the full obligation, but you're meant to really show that you're addressing that 25%. And so the combination of those two things, the realistic development potential and that 25% of the remainder, is what's called your adjusted fourth round obligation. So on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about how we actually meet that adjusted obligation, and there's a lot of different ways to get there. You could carry forward surplus credits from the third round. Unfortunately, we don't have those. As you just saw, we've really maxed out a lot of the credits that we have for the third round, so we don't anticipate additional ones carrying forward. You can look at applications that are pending or expected and may be anticipated to be approved after June 30th. There are zoning approaches and redevelopment planning approaches, there's municipally-sponsored projects, and then there are bonus credits. And so we are limited to 25% of our prospective need. Can we satisfy with bonus credits? But those are available to us. And the next slide talks about what those bonuses are. They're different in every round, and that was one of the challenges, is in the third round, there was a set of bonus credits, and then in the fourth round, they're very different. So for this round, the fourth round, you can get a one-for-one bonus credit for special needs housing, for conversion of market rate housing to affordable. and for municipal concentration, contribution, excuse me, to an affordable housing development. And then you get a half bonus credit for a series of other types of housing, you know, partnerships with nonprofits, transit-oriented development, that's an important one, and that's not just the train station, but also bus stops. So that really does capture a lot of Madison. Any age-restricted housing, redevelopment of commercial, you know, non-residential property to residential, that gets you a half credit. Any extension of existing affordability controls. And if you provide more than the amount required for very low-income units and three-bedroom units. So a host of bonus credits are available, but again, they're capped at that twenty-five percent of the total prospective need. So looking at the housing element and fair share plan itself, there are two components. There is the housing element, which is a series of demographic analysis and details, all of which are required by the state. Interesting information, but we're not going to cover it tonight because really the meat of the plan is the fair share plan. It's essentially how are you going to meet your obligation with the specific strategies? In addition to those two components, there's a number of requirements that are generally in the appendix. You do have to have draft form of ordinances. So some of the strategies that you'll see that we'll talk about will require some zoning changes. This adoption of the master plan element of the housing element and fair share plan does not change the zoning. It is not zoning, but that is something that the Borough Council essentially would have until next March to do. But you are required to show the draft form, basically. So that has been provided in the appendix. And then there's the affirmative marking plan, marketing plan, spending plan, you know, municipal housing liaison, and administrative agent, all that documentation, which exists from the third round, will be updated by next March as needed for the fourth round. It's all kind of standard documentation. So all that's in the appendix. But this is really the meat of it and why we're all here tonight. So the compliance strategy, how are we going to meet that two hundred and six total obligation as adjusted? And so the first step of that is the vacant land adjustment, the vacant land analysis. This is an analysis that Topology Graham basically led. And so it is a standard analysis where it's mostly mapping. And you take the vacant land as identified by the assessor data, and you basically plug it into mapping software. You take out environmental constraints, and you're really only looking at vacant land of a certain size because it needs to be of a sufficient size to allow for at least one affordable housing unit. And what that generally means, if you assume a twenty percent set-aside, is it needs to be able to accommodate five units. So we're talking about, you know, vacant land over a certain size. You can see throughout, I'm not going to dwell on this, but scattered, there are scattered vacant sites throughout Madison, but most of them do not accommodate at least five units, which would get you that one affordable unit. So really, the outcome of this project, the process, the analysis is on the next slide. And it found that there are a total of five vacant properties in Madison that could support development according to those criteria. It's vacant, it's not constrained, could get you at least five units based on certain densities that are already established in the borough. And so the important thing here is that this is purely for analysis. I heard the concerns expressed earlier by Mr. DiMarzo, and we actually spoke before the meeting. So I reiterated this to him, but it's important to put it on the record that these are not proposed for development or rezoning. The purpose of these sites is purely to get you to this vacant land analysis, which, the outcome of which tells you your adjusted number, essentially. And so that's it. There is no zoning proposed here, there is no development proposed here. I think there was some confusion in some of the reporting perhaps, but there was no overlay specifically, no overlay zoning proposed on the Westerly Avenue property. It really is just, you look at the decimal places, it's generating a number. And the number that it generates is six units. So that really is the realistic development potential borough-wide that can be expected from existing vacant land. There's not a requirement to develop on those vacant properties. It's just to get you that number. And so when you add, you take that number from two oh six, you get two hundred, right? And then you are required to meet twenty-five percent of that remainder, you know, through this fourth round plan. So that's fifty, right? Twenty-five percent of two hundred. So that really is the combination of those two things. It's your adjusted number, which is on the next slide, kind of drills it down. So there is a present need obligation, which is just like rehabilitation. That also comes from the state. They determine that you have zero present need obligation. That's just purely based on census data. So really, the prospective need, the total is, again, two hundred and six. What we found, based on that vacant land analysis, is that there is only six units of redevelopment, realistic development potential. The twenty-five percent of the remainder gets you at fifty. So you are combined at a total of fifty-six units of adjusted fourth round obligation. That is the number that we need to address in this fourth round. And then at the bottom, just for information, is it shows you the maximum amount of credits that we can take. So it's, again, twenty-five percent of that two oh six, the total obligation. It's just good to have in our minds that fifty-one point five bonus credits is our max. So we can't go over that. So on the next slide, when you're looking at potential sites for inclusion in the affordable housing plan, there are a set of established criteria by the state. There are these four components. Is it approvable? Is it readily approvable by land use agencies? Is it available? Is it encumbered in any way? Is it reasonably developable from an infrastructure standpoint, water and sewer? And lastly, is it suitable for development? Does it meet the environmental policies that are set out by the state? And an important note here, that when the state talks about infrastructure and suitability, they're really only talking about water and sewer infrastructure. Those are the permitted, you know, the permitted constraints that we're allowed to look at. It doesn't talk about schools or traffic. And I know that's difficult for residents because those are obviously very important, and they're important for impacts. But the state only requires you to look at, and really only permits you to look at, water and sewer availability. So we did look at all of the sites through the lens of these criteria, and that really got us to the bottom line, which you see, the two components here in red is the realistic development potential. Again, the six units. So the two red items are how we're meeting those six. And then the items in blue are how we're meeting the twenty-five percent of the rest. So the six units will be satisfied through two projects. One is an already-existing affordable housing development at Twenty-Seven Elm Street. Again, it's built, occupied, exists, but its affordability controls will be expiring during this round. So the borough will be working to extend those controls and has already adopted proposed some legislation to financially support the extension of those controls. So we do get credit for that, and we do have the ability to get bonuses for that, for the extension of controls. So there are three affordable units there that will be extended, and then we get bonuses of one point five. So that nets us a total of four point five credits from that existing property. The other project here for RDP is the One Geralda Supportive Housing. I talked about the multifamily component of that project in the third round. Here, we are using in the fourth round, the supportive housing, the special needs housing component of that project. It is already, again, an application that's been submitted to the borough. It's for a fifty-two-bed supportive housing building, one building at One Geralda Farms. We are taking just two credits of those fifty-two for the RDP portion. We do get a one-for-one bonus credit, so that, those two units net us four credits total. So that's the RDP portion. For the remainder, again, that twenty-five percent that is likely to redevelop, we're taking some additional credits from One Geralda Supportive Housing, again, up to sixteen. We're taking sixteen credits and then getting bonuses to get to thirty-two total credits. And then there are three proposed overlay zones that are part of this strategy. There is a row of five homes on, or five lots, I should say, on Brunner Street, right at its, near its intersection with Main. These are all under common ownership and include the parking lot for the Covelli Brothers, the former Covelli Brothers Nursery, which, by the way, is already in an affordable housing overlay from the third round. So this would just add some additional lots to an overlay district. There are two office buildings on Shunpike, which are existing, would be pulled into a new overlay district. And then there are two lots on Kings Road. There's a vacant lot, which actually was in the vacant land adjustment. And then there's an adjacent gas station, and collectively, those two lots would be part of an overlay as well. So the combined for all three of those would be a total of fifteen actual units. And then plus bonus credits, really, you see, nets us part of our total, which is, bottom line, thirty-six affordable units and twenty-seven bonus credits to get to a total of sixty-three total credits, which is in excess of the fifty-six that we need. I just want to speak a little bit about overlay zones. That's not a new strategy. Madison already used them in the third round. There are a number of overlays that have been in place since the third round was adopted. Several on Main Street, for example, already in place. And what an overlay does is it doesn't change the underlying zoning of the property. That underlying zoning remains in place. It just basically provides some additional development options for the owner if they so choose. So, for example, on Shunpike, those are two office buildings where residential currently would not be permitted. The overlay zoning would just allow the owners of those properties to consider building residential development with a twenty percent affordable housing set-aside if they so chose. They are also free to continue to have the office buildings in place and to upgrade those office buildings if needed. So it really, it doesn't require the owners of those properties to take any action. It really is just the borough doing its due diligence and its good-faith effort to support affordable housing by providing those options. So again, it's not changing anything underlying in terms of the zoning. So that was the basic compliance strategy. The final slide here is just what happens next. As I mentioned earlier, the planning board did adopt this on Monday night. And so really, what is before you tonight is the endorsement of both the amended third round plan and separately, the fourth round plan. And you do have that deadline of next week to do that. So that's why we're here tonight. And then once that occurs, we will be entering a challenge period through the end of August, and then we'll proceed from there. If there are challenges, there'll be a mediation period. But really, the idea is that everything will be implemented in terms of any required new zoning and other implementing documentation by March of next year. So I'm happy to answer any questions from council or public.
Questions would be from council as the hearing was done at the planning board meeting. There may be comments later. Thank you, Susan. Thank you so much for your presentation, especially doing it twice in three days and your work with Graham Pedo on putting this plan together. It is an excellent product, and you have outlined it not only what Madison's obligation is, but how the law, the background on the law and the deadlines we have to meet. I just want to emphasize two things before we ask for any comments from the, or questions from the council. One, again, which you covered, is the calculation for the vacant land adjustment and the lots that were put in there. So, for example, one of the lots talked about eight units per acre in a calculation. That is not permitted in that zone. So the only thing permitted on that lot is what exists today zoning-wise. There is no proposal. It's just that we had to do that in our calculation. And if we didn't have it in our calculation, those that looked at our plan would have put it in the calculation. So I appreciate the thorough work of taking the, our tax assessment, mapping, and looking at where improvements are and where these larger lots exist and how it calculate. And the other to reinforce what you just said is overlay is permissive but not required. So it gives a, for example, the Shunpike properties, just as you did say, it gives the owners more flexibility, but they could keep it exactly in today's usage. So with that, with that, any comments?
I would just add on to that really quickly, thank you, Mayor, that the borough is also not required to make sure that something happens in the overlays. Your only requirement is to, you know, enact the zoning that allows for that possibility. It may be that the particular property owner decides not to build, you know, affordable housing or any kind of residential development within this next ten-year timeframe or ever. But you have met your obligation by including it in this plan and providing for the zoning that allows that to happen.
And to reinforce one other thing, just as you, it came my mind as you were speaking there, and it was brought up on Monday's planning board meeting, is even with the overlays in place, there's a site plan process that goes through the land use boards. And that's when traffic generation, other things are analyzed and to make sure that the final design is done in a proper way that meets the needs of Madison.
Absolutely.
All right, and since I don't have a great view of the council, I'll ask council president Ehrlich to recognize any of the council members that wish to comment before we move on to approval of the endorsement resolutions.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start. Thank you, Susan, for that presentation. You covered a lot of information in a brisk and concise way. But now that I hear you've done it three times, I guess you're pretty polished at this point with this deck. Thank you. And thank you to Graham Pedo for the great analysis. I'm pleased that this, both the third round adjustment and the fourth round plan meet our obligations. And I do support the resolutions that we're going to be taking a vote on shortly. Just want to circle back to some of the comments that were raised during the comment period. As the mayor said, we discussed the properties that were part of the vacant land adjustment. But there was another comment or suggestion that we discuss the communication requirements for zoning changes. You did point out during your presentation that there is no zoning change in this portion of the master plan. But can you talk a little bit about communication requirements for zoning changes and how that works?
Yep, sure. So there would be required zoning changes to implement some of these strategies through the creation of overlays. So when that is ultimately done by you, the governing body, there is a normal procedure that happens with zoning changes as well as site plans where there's a required notification of people within a certain radius, I believe it's two hundred feet, of a proposed zoning change. So that, they would certainly be notified. The borough may choose to, as the commenter said, go above and beyond that. It's really up to the borough, but there would most assuredly be the minimum notice requirements when those actual zoning changes are, you know, are being proposed. In this plan, it's just, it's an element of your master plan, so there is no, there's no action actually proposed. And that is very typical for any kind of element of the master plan. There are many recommendations that typically come out of master plans, and they may or may not result in ordinance changes or zone changes. So similarly, here, while there are recommendations for the zoning changes, that is really a future phase that is required to be done by March of next year, but we're not there yet. So when that actually happens, people will be formally notified if they are within that distance.
And you did a nice job highlighting those properties that were proposed for zoning overlays, which are separate than the properties that contribute to the vacant land calculation.
Correct. Because there's no action proposed on those vacant land properties, it was purely for analysis purposes. There was no notice requirement now or in the future because there's nothing proposed in the future.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Lindgren, you have a comment?
We hear a lot about highest and best use for a property. And when you talk about, when you think about those two office buildings on, was it Shunpike? If the owner decides to keep them vacant office buildings, that's his choice. But the highest and best use of that may be to put residential there with affordables. And the same with, let's say, a big piece of property with a small little house on it. Well, the highest and best use of that may be to really utilize that land. The land is worth more than the house. But that's the owner's choice.
Yep.
And I'm assuming that if we didn't do this, the state would do the same thing themselves.
Yes.
So by us doing this, we're ahead of, not ahead of the state, but if the state were to come back to us, we could say, guys, we already did this, and this is our findings as well.
Yeah, you can say that you've taken a thorough look, and I would argue even a conservative look to see what's possible, and you've accounted for that in the plan. And I'm glad that you reminded me of the highest and best use component because that is also something that we looked at when we were looking at strategies and sites to meet the obligation is the land-to-building ratio. So properties where the land is actually worth more than the building, and that is the case for those two properties on Shunpike and a couple of the other properties as well. That generally indicates that it's not at its highest and best use, that the property may be ripe for redevelopment. There may be a lot of need for building upgrades, et cetera, that make it a little bit more likely to redevelop. And so that's why we focused on some of those properties. But again, it doesn't force them to redevelop anything. To your point, they could choose to continue to operate.
It's the owner's choice, what he wants to do.
Yep.
Ellen Hoodis?
So, so everybody's clear on this, and I'm clear on it too. The next ten years, our real obligation, after we use our bonus credits, is to develop fifty-six point five affordable units.
Our real total obligation is fifty-six. We can use bonus credits to meet part of that obligation.
To meet part of the two hundred.
Yes.
Right.
Which goes to the fifty-six.
We have ten years to develop fifty-six and use those bonus credits.
Correct.
And the vacant land adjustment properties, what would trigger? Something where we would go and say, maybe we do have to. Nothing?
I don't see anything legally triggering you. If anybody who owned one of those properties was interested in doing something, they could probably come to the. If anybody in, who owned one of those properties was interested in doing something, they could probably come to the borough and propose something, but that would be a separate process. It's not part of this, this plan. It's not accounted for. If any of those properties wanted to ask for a zoning change or ask for redevelopment plan, they're, they're free to do that. Any, any units generated from those vacant land properties or any other property in the borough would just sort of be above and beyond what you've already committed to doing. So you don't, you don't need them to meet your obligation. There is still that sort of unmet need, right, the remainder. So it is a good aspirational number to try to reach. So if opportunities do arise, the borough can look at those. But there is no legal requirement that I'm aware of for, for you to consider those vacant land properties.
Okay, so we have 56.
You have your 56, you've found them on, on the sites that we identified and the areas that we've identified.
Oh, that's great, thanks Susan.
I think it's important to clarify though that there isn't going to be a tally at the end of 10 years where we have to produce 56 units. We just have to show that we created opportunity for the market to drive the development of those units if the demand is there.
Yeah, it's a very good point. There's no crystal ball and we, we don't know exactly what's going to happen in 10 years, but you've made your good faith effort.
And, and with the RDP, that, that, we have to deliver on the RDP, which we have a plan already in place.
You're expected to do the RDP. You're expected to meet that and for those to be real units, those six units, and, and they are.
Right. And they are i- in there. And the 206 is not, that was just the starting point that you showed how we calculated, calculated that down to basically the 50.
Yes, I mean there are communities that had a perspective need of eight or 900 units. So be glad that you're not an enormous community that has that number. But that 206 is, is out there, but it's really just, you know, something to try to meet at some point. It's not a legal requirement.
And round three, and we just came up with 77, do we have to build anything?
That, it's the same requirement as I understand. It's you're, you're meant to find, no, not the 25%, that's a new fourth round requirement. It's 77 units of realistic development that you have to find.
And we did.
You did it. And that was different than the fourth round or even the third round plan. That was really resulting from that court order. So it was a very specific moment in time.
Thanks to Drew.
Any other comments?
Rachel, can I just put on the record?
Please.
Just so that DeMarzis can sleep well tonight, I'd like to put on the public record. So for 16 Wesley, our planner has confirmed that we're not proposing any rezoning of the property. There's no proposed development of the property. The borough is not utilizing or suggesting eminent domain or any type of condemnation action. There's no overlaying zone for that property or now are proposed and that you, the use that's currently in place can continue and that you control 100% of the future of the property under your direction and that of your family. So we just want to put that on the record so that, and we appreciate that you came in and raised these concerns in, in such a professional way, the way you presented the issues this evening. Thank you.
And, and just to add to that very quickly is, the only reason it popped up is the analysis that was not necessarily done by AI. It was done by real people, but it took lots of certain sizes, looked at improvements and spit out an answer. And that's what we had to accommodate in, in the calculation. If there are no other comments from the council, I will ask for a motion for resolution 189, 2025, resolution of the Borough of Madison endorsing the revised third round housing element and fair share plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
And I will now entertain a motion for resolution 190-2025, resolution of the Borough of Madison endorsing the fourth round housing element and fair share plan.
I move resolution 190-2025.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
All right, and I want to thank everyone for your, again, for all your work and tolerating me just showing up on screen. And I now hand it back to the able control of our council president, Rachel Erlich, and thank you for covering.
Thank you mayor. Okay, so we're now going to move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meetings of the council held on May the 28th and June the 9th, 2025. All posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up the ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 21-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $18,204 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for construction plans and cost estimates at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 21-2025. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I'll move ordinance 21-2025.
Second.
Any council discussion? This again is for repair of the steps and entrance at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. Okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 21-2025 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 22-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $233,755 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the construction of four affordable rental units at 24 Belmont Avenue.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 22-2025. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 22-2025.
Second.
So as previously discussed, this is a contribution from the borough's Affordable Trust Fund to support our housing authority's application. This is a, a small percentage of the construction cost that the borough puts forth in order for our housing authority to qualify for a much larger grant from the state Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 22-2025 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 23-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $2,556 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase batteries for the Madison Police Department portable radios.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 23-2025. No one wishing to comment, may step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 23-2025 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 24-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter 195 of the Borough Code to correct an error in section 195-5C regarding the partial repeal of ordinance number 2-2023.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 24-2025. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 24-2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 24-2025 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And ordinance 25-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $410,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to fund a portion of the downtown signage program.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 25-2025. There's no one wishing to comment, I will close the hearing.
I move ordinance 25-2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 25-2025 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. We now move on to the second period for public comment. We invite the public to comment on any topic. And again, the same rules apply. Anyone wishing to comment on any topic, please step forward, state your name and address and please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a limited grace period. Anyone wishing to comment?
Hi there, I'm Joe Bezralian, Chatham Township and a member of the Board of Friends of the Drew Forest. First, thank you for all you do for Madison, our neighbors in Chatham Township and for the broader community. I wanted to come in tonight because it's hot outside and not just to enjoy this very beautiful air conditioning in this building. And not just because, as you've heard many, many times, that a forest helps keep a community much cooler than pavement, which is part of why you're working to preserve open space. But also because, did you know that the 18-acre deer exposure fence in the Drew Forest also keeps the area even cooler? And, and that is because the extreme overabundant deer herds that we have across New Jersey eat everything within reach from the ground up. So that forests which suffer from these overabundant herds don't have all that plant matter to, to, which helps cool that forest. Those forests that are eaten by overabundant herds are four to 14 degrees hotter on average than forests that are healthy, that don't face overabundant herds. So not only, so we have that added benefit of the Drew Forest in our community. Now, I've gotten to spend a lot, the last six months learning about this because now I'm an independent contractor and my client has caused me to do a lot of work on deer. So in, having a healthy forest without overabundant herds also gives us 600 to 800 additional species of plants and animals, which is incredible biodiversity. A healthy forest without overabundant herds gives us even more water purification, more plants of more variety, gives us better water purification into aquifers, more carbon storage in those plants and out of the atmosphere, and many other benefits. So I have also learned in the last six months that deer herds in New Jersey are about 10 times what forests have evolved to handle. About 100 deer per square mile in New Jersey versus historically 10. It's partly because we've eliminated apex predators, but also because every time we build out into suburban sprawl and develop into forested areas, we create the edge habitat that, that they love and year-round landscaping. So when we build out where it actually creates, even breeds more deer. I also learned that in New Jersey, there are 25,000-plus annual confirmed and reported vehicle collisions. That's one out of every 360 people every year hits a deer on average. 20% of farmers have abandoned parcels of land because the deer do so much damage. That means less food and higher prices, Lyme disease and other tick-borne illnesses. And also, there are a million food insecure people in New Jersey. So actually, deer harvesting, one deer on average provides very healthy nutrition for 120 people on average. So I just wanted to come in praise of the Drew Forest for its deer fence and deer exposure and the example to the community and to the wider world that it gives of what a healthy forest can really do. Thank you again for, for giving me your time.
Thank you for your comments. And thank you to the Drew, Friends of the Drew Forest who have committed over many years to have comments at every meeting. I admire your steadfast commitment to attendance. Thank you.
I even brought my glasses so I could sign in. My name is Mary Jane Lunt. I am 38 years a resident in Madison at Ten Highview Terrace. You've seen me here before singing for the Drew Forest and doing other things. I'm here to be very quick tonight, but to support the efforts of the, the plan that was approved by the, the planning board Monday night to, for third and fourth rounds. I'm not sure exactly what the title is, but I support it personally. And the board and, and the Friends of the Drew Forest also support the efforts of the borough. I promised you Tom. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Take your time.
I'm so sorry. I didn't see you, you were very quiet.
Take your time.
There we go.
That's all right, I already signed. Sam DeMarzo up here again. I just wanted to, once again, thank Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett for their time and their efforts in explanation and for stating that for the public record. I do appreciate that. I will be paying closer attention than I have been lately. Obviously, I, I should be. Some things that weren't clear are hypothetically, if none of the private property owners choose to pursue any of these units that were proposed, how does that affect us down the road? Does that put us in a weaker position for the next round? And then, if it does, do any of these identified properties, are they in a weaker position for future rounds of negotiation? So I guess I'm still trying to understand the process here of how this will work going forward. Cause I know this is not the final round. And if none of these private property owners choose, even with this overlay zoning, to take advantage of that, where does that make us in negotiations for the next round? Does that put us in a position where we did not operate in good faith for this round? Or is that par for the course for this? I guess as a property owner, resident, local business owner, I would just like to know more about that. Because obviously this isn't the final round. I wish it were, but it seems like this is going to be a reoccurring problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMarzo. We can respond to comments at the end of the period. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Okay, seeing none, I close this portion of the hearing. Mr. Cody, would you mind addressing Mr. DeMarzo's question?
I, I think you did, actually mayor, a fine job earlier when you indicated our obligation statutorily and constitutionally is to provide a mechanism to facilitate a reasonable probability of development. And by adopting these overlay zones and the other compliance mechanisms that we've laid out, that's our obligation. So we would be satisfied, it's not a carryover penalty that if these projects don't happen, for example, in the third round, we had overlay zones along main street that was alluded to earlier. Those projects have not happened, that, that doesn't carry over as an obligation into this round, which is the fourth round. The state has a, a process of a round, is a 10-year cycle. So the third round ends June 30th and then the, the fourth round starts July 1st and runs until June 30th of 2035. I, I don't think I'll be here for the next round, or alive. But, so there's going to be a series, this is a perpetual obligation every 10 years that 564 towns will continue to go through forever. It's the Full Employment Planner Act, we call it, no, just teasing.
Thank you Ray. Okay, we now move on to the introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for July the 28th, 2025. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 26-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $14,548.26 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase full-faced respiratory mask replacements.
I move ordinance 26-2025.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Harland Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
John, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, sorry, just one comment on 193. I, I would hope that as part of this.
So John, let me clarify.
We're not there yet.
We're doing ordinances.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
I know you're eager to get to the consent agenda. Get to it. Okay, we're going to move on to ordinance 27-2025, please.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $40,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, camera and other security. Fund for access controls, camera, and other security enhancements and improvements.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, my turn. Make a motion to move ordinance 27-2025.
Second.
Any council discussion? I'll just clarify that this is to create card access and secure access control at the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps building for future security enhancements. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harold Pudis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance 28-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for funding of a new electric vehicle senior shuttle van.
I move ordinance 28-2025.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harold Pudis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Now, we move, we'll move on to consent agenda resolutions. The clerk, please read the statement.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I'll move ordinance, Consent Agenda Resolution 191-2025 through 201-2025.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of these, or any that need to be polled for a separate vote?
Just on 193, I just hope that as we're looking at these drainage issues, we're looking at West Lane, because I know that there are some issues there that the neighbors have brought to our attention, and I hope that that's prioritized.
Thank you, Councilman Forte. The idea here is to, as Mr. Burnett has explained to me, create a plan for addressing these in a systematic way, and so this acknowledges the borough's obligation to balance the needs for drainage planning against other commitments that the borough has for capital improvements. Tom?
Resolution 200-2025, maybe Mr. Cody or Mr. Burnett could just, or you, Mayor, can elaborate a little bit as to what that's.
This is regarding the fees for the borough-owned utility poles and telecom service wiring. 200?
200, right.
Altis agreement?
With Altis.
Yes, unlike most towns, the Borough of Madison owns the majority of the utility poles. In Madison, we own 2,154, and Altis, which is the subsidiary of Optimum, which is the market name, has attached equipment to our poles, but historically has previously paid attachment fees to Verizon, who we felt inappropriately collected the fees on our behalf and then retained them. So we negotiated a separate agreement with Altis that will be retroactive to October 13th of 2023, and they will be paying us $80,000 for that period of time, and then prospectively approximately $50,000 a year for the next 10 years, with a 3% escalator each year for the right to attach and keep their equipment on our poles. With Greg's help and his associates at Matt's office, we're currently negotiating with Verizon for a similar arrangement, and their figure for attaching will be significantly higher than Altis, because we want to recover the funds that they inappropriately retained over the years, and they should pay a higher fee to make us whole. And so that's going to be a little bit of a rub, trying to get them to sign on the dotted line.
Okay, thanks, Ray.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harold Pudis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, so let's move on to the approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
Yes, from the current fund, $4,388,534.73. From the General Capital Fund, $3,847.60. From the Electric Operating Fund, $584,989.15. From the Electric Capital Fund, $11,375 even. From the Water Operating Fund, $40,543.64. And from the Water Capital Fund, $2,930.84. From the Trust, $38,217.51. The total is $5,070,438.47.
I'll move the approval of the vouchers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Erlich?